All right, we need an agenda, right? That's too smart, Karen. All right, what time is it, guys?
Like seven thirty-three, I think.
Yes, it's fine. Seven thirty-three, you have to go.
All right, you want to call the meeting in order? I'd like to call this April twenty-eighth, Board Meeting in Order, please. Roll call, Mrs. Slunt.
Dr. Cordellino?
Here.
Mr. Dodtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Dr. Modrack?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Huh?
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Arena? Mr. Gudamela?
All right, we had the pleasure of allegiance with the closed session. Open public meetings law, Mrs. Slunt?
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Township Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's official newspaper, on January tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. We're just going to change the agenda around a little. We don't have any high school representatives here this evening. And usually, we go through committee reports, but we're going to take the next maximum of maybe twenty-five minutes to hear the business superintendent and the board president speak briefly on what is happening with the year two thousand and twenty year-end events. Those of you that are in the public who are listening tonight, the Board of Education and administration has been receiving emails. Several of them are for the same parents three and four times, which is great. However, as you all know, the governor has not made any final decision regarding graduation. Our administrations have taken some initiative and what to do in the event that we can't go back to school. Dr. Rovatar has been involved with every one of the emails, both from a board's standpoint, superintendent's standpoint, and she has been sort of keeping a summary. And I'm going to turn the program over to her, but before I do that, I want to let the parents know, of the seniors especially, that there is going to be a meeting on Thursday evening and on Friday afternoon, and I'm sure Dr. Rovatar will speak to that. At the conclusion of her remarks, I'm going to open it up for a few questions. But keep in mind, this meeting is advertised as the public hearing on the budget for next year, so we're going to have to get to that. And then we're going to have to do the agenda, and then if there's still people around at the end of the meeting, we'll give an opportunity to speak. But keep in mind that a lot of the ideas have been documented, a lot of the ideas are being shared with the administration. And more information will be forthcoming as soon as we hear. Dr. Rovatar, please.
Okay, I want to begin by first stating, and I hope people are hearing this, that no final decision has been made about graduation. We are awaiting the decision from the governor on May fifteenth regarding whether schools will be allowed to reopen for the remainder of the school year. We await additional information from the governor with regard to the continuation of the executive order, which currently prohibits any public gathering in excess of ten persons. This information will form the basis of our decision-making for the class of two thousand and twenty. Since the May fifteenth date is only about five weeks prior to our scheduled graduation, the district has moved forward with plans for a virtual graduation in case it is necessary to hold a virtual graduation. Such a production will involve all of the traditional elements of the ceremony, such as the speeches and pictures and video of all of the individual graduates. A high-quality production cannot be pieced together in several days. If we ultimately do not need a virtual graduation, we will be happy, we'll be thrilled, but we need this time to prepare in case we are faced with limited alternatives. The district has received numerous suggestions from students and parents. These suggestions, many of which have been shared through social media from around the country, include the following. Delay the prom until a date in the summer or Thanksgiving weekend. Delay graduation until a date later in the summer or on a weekend in the fall. Hold the graduation on the field with only students present or with only students and two parents per graduate. Graduates would be seated six feet apart on the field, and parents would be six feet apart in the stands. Students and parents would wear masks, or students would wear plastic PPE shields. Students would wear white gloves. Students would remove their masks or shields as they cross the stage to receive their diplomas. Hold a car line graduation ceremony. Students would sit in the front passenger seat of the car with their family members present in the car. The car line would form at St. Pius for a procession to MTHS led by the police. Or the car line would form at each of the five elementary schools and proceed to MTHS. Upon arrival at MTHS, all of the teachers could line the driveway with a six-foot distance separating them to cheer on the graduates as they proceed to the Mustang Circle in front of the school. At the Mustang Circle, the principal would hand the graduate their diploma cover. The family would then drive away. With the car line graduation, there is no actual ceremony, or a virtual ceremony would be broadcast at another time. Hold a drive-in movie graduation ceremony. This suggestion comes from Hanover, Pennsylvania, a community that happens to have a drive-in movie theater located in their municipality. Cars would be located in a large parking lot, and a virtual graduation ceremony would be broadcast on a screen, enabling everyone to watch together. Other celebrations and tributes. In a small New Jersey town, the mayor has offered to purchase large signs with a picture of each senior, which would be placed in a prominent location for all members of the community to see. This high school has approximately twenty-five students. In a small Michigan community, banners are being created with a picture of each senior. These banners will be hung from light poles throughout the town. This is a small district with a pre-K through twelve total enrollment of less than three hundred students, meaning the senior class has less than thirty students. Mr. Sanford, along with other members of the MTHS administrative team, senior class advisors, have met and continue to have a dialogue with senior class officers and had an open dialogue last Friday with members of the senior class. We need to remember some key numbers. Our prom is a gathering of approximately five hundred people. Our graduation is typically a gathering of two thousand people. Military graduations have been held with no parents and no spectators. These ceremonies have been permitted because the students in these academies live together in a military installation. This is a different circumstance than having three hundred students from different homes come together for a ceremony. These are, this is a summary of all of the proposals and suggestions that we've received to date. If there are other suggestions that were not enumerated on this list, we would encourage parents to share them. This afternoon, Mr. Sanford, through Schoology, shared information with parents and students about two meetings, which Mr. Grau alluded to, that will be held. These are virtual meetings. One of them will be held on Thursday evening at seven PM. The second one will be held on Friday at two PM in the afternoon. These virtual conferences with parents and students will allow Mr. Sanford to share information and for parents and students to have input. I, I think that, you know, we, I just want to convey to parents that truly no decision has been made, but if, in fact, we are still closed and social distancing remains in effect, we cannot put together a quality virtual graduation in several days' time. That's why we've moved ahead to begin to plan for that and make the arrangements necessary in order for that to happen. I think that that concludes things. I do, Mr. Grau, I do want to remind you that we do have a couple of the athletic teams that we want to honor, but I think maybe if we want to engage in the discussion on these topics, and then just remember that I would need to return to the presentations on the athletic teams when we're done.
Okay. I see on the agenda, we are honoring two, and last board meeting, I think we did three. And I would ask you, Renee, to send the board's letter of congratulations to the coaches involved, like you did last month, and congratulating them on a very successful season, okay? As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I will open it up now to public participation for a period of time, but you've just heard information from myself. You didn't hear much from me, but you heard a wealth of information from the superintendent, and you're also cognizant of two meetings being held now on Thursday and Friday. If you have any ideas or suggestions, please feel free to, you can email them to me, but carbon copy Dr. Rovatar, because I'm just going to send them to her, so this way you'll cut out one step, okay? Are there any questions out there at this time? We can revisit this at the end of the meeting also. Now, I don't know if there's any questions, Katene, Renee, are there any questions?
Sorry, let me, let me give you the directions, so people know how to do that. Okay, you, if you are in the Zoom meeting, they need to, help me, you need to raise your hand, and we will recognize you, we will indicate that you are recognized by name, and then we will open things for you to be able to speak during the meeting. Okay, I do see that we have a question with regard to the funds that have already been raised by the senior class. That is a matter of discussion that is currently going on between Mrs. Slunt, myself, Mr. Sanford, the senior class advisors. We have not made any determinations with regard to that, the use of those funds at this present time.
Nobody has their hands up.
Okay, one more time, before we move on, if, is there anyone, I see we do have a number of attendees, okay, I see Mrs. Gilmore, you have raised your hand, so we are going to open access for you, and please share your comments with us.
Who is this, I'm sorry?
This is Mrs. Gilmore.
This is Mrs. Gilmore.
This is Gilmore.
Okay, Mrs. Gilmore, good evening.
Hi, everyone, and thank you so much for holding this meeting and allowing us to weigh in, and I also want to start by saying, you know, we, we truly applaud all of your efforts, as well as Mr. Sanford's, and understand the good intentions are out there. And certainly, no, no, no one is questioning that he believes, given the circumstances, this is the right path, and we certainly understand, at least I do, the way you've laid it out, that there is definitely reason to fully develop this virtual option. So I guess, I guess what I'm thinking at this moment, the outreach from him has significantly increased, and it feels like we're going to let some of these scenarios, alternate scenarios that you rattled through, take shape. At least, that's my hope, that we actually let the alternate scenarios come together in a ready-to-go format, just the way we're doing with the virtual option. And, you know, with respect to that, I think I'd like to offer my services, and I'm sure other parents, and certainly the students would as well, to develop those alternates. I know the students have been privy to some of the work streams that they've been doing. They have put together alternatives, some of them are the ones that you mentioned. Some of them accompany the virtual and would be appropriate even for the current situation the state finds itself in. And then from there, they move on to what we all hoped is a better public health situation later in the year. And I'd like to petition that it might take a little bit of a village to fully develop those scenarios and have the support structure in place so that they're ready to go.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilroy. As you know, these two meetings will be held on Thursday and Friday, and I'm sure you'll be talking at one of the meetings, okay? There are a lot of ideas, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of other ideas, and that's the purpose to get the ideas back into a workable number, so that we're ready to go if and when we know where we're going and in what direction. But I, I thank you again for coming tonight. I'm glad that I finally talked to you after the emails that have been going back and forth, but thank you so much. Do we have any others at this point?
Is there anybody else that wants to be recognized to speak, please tap the raise-your-hand button? I'm not seeing anything at the moment.
All right, well, we'll come back at the end of the meeting. We'll jump then back following the agenda for the superintendent's report for the presentations. Dr. Rovatar?
Okay, we have two, as I indicated, two teams that we are honoring this evening. The first is the MTHS bowling team. They had an outstanding season this year. They earned the following honors. They were the NJAC Conference Champions, they were the Morris County Champions, and the North One Group Two Sectional Champions, so please join me in a round of applause to congratulate our bowling team on an outstanding year. Okay, and as you indicated, as I did with the teams from the last meeting, I did forward the certificates and a letter of congratulations to the coaches. Our second honoree this evening, the MTHS Girls Basketball Team, truly an outstanding season that they had. They earned the NJAC Conference Championship, they were the Morris County Champions, and they had an undefeated regular season record. Individually, there were a number of players on the team that had all county, all conference, and even state-level honors. This was truly an exceptional team, and it was delightful to watch them, and I know many of the board members were engaged as fans of this team throughout their season, so again, I hope you will all join me in a round of applause for our girls' basketball team.
Before we give it to Mrs. Slunt, I would also like to thank the board members who had a great following this winter between not just the athletic events, but the winter concerts, all of the, the shows that took place before the virus hit. And it was great seeing so many of my colleagues out there in attendance and supporting our functions. All right, the next part is the presentation of the budget, if you might remember. This was the real last public meeting that we had in public, which was on March tenth, and I guess we were a little pretty smart, because the meeting was scheduled for March seventeenth, and we had a meeting there, but it had to be canceled. But we did have a very lengthy meeting on the tenth, and Katene spent quite a bit, I think, two and a half hours roughly, going through the budget in detail. I think she might have gotten some follow-up questions, and, and I know that this presentation tonight is not going to be the two-and-a-half-hour one, Katene told me, because if it was two-and-a-half hours, I might have to get up and leave for a minute. But seriously, I want to thank the administration for the job they've done. I understand the county superintendent approved it with no changes from what we submitted, which is very unusual, and I think that's an indicator of the two administrators we're looking at here, Dr. Rovatar and Mrs. Slunt, and I thank them for that. All right, so yours, Katene, for this presentation.
Okay, we are just getting the presentation up onto the screen. So every year, the Board of Education presents, prepares, and presents a budget for the subsequent year. So this is the budget presentation for the school year that will start on July one, two thousand and twenty, and will run till June, two thousand and twenty-one. The school budget is the board's financial plan that it makes with the administration. It incorporates the strategic plans of the Board of Education, as well as the academic expectations of the district. In order for the budget to be balanced, which is a requirement set by the State Department of Education, the resources available to the Board of Education have to equal the cost, so that there cannot be more expenditures than there are resources to support it. The budget can be categorized as the financial representation of all the events that occur during a year, everything from what happens in the classroom to the co-curricular activities that occur after school, the athletics that occur after school, and they can be organized into a, four different areas: instruction, support service, administration, employee benefits, and then operations. So the first area that we're going to look into is the area of instruction. It includes the classroom experiences, both for regular and for special education instruction, basic skills and bilingual instruction, co-curricular and athletic events that occur after school, as well as the students who are sent out of district to be educated at outside facilities. In terms of program changes this year, we will be adding one elementary teacher due to enrollment changes. We are expanding our basic skills program, as well as our bilingual program, based on the needs of the students within the district, adding two additional basic skills teachers and one point two new bilingual teachers. We are expanding our textbook adoptions in the area of the elementary vocabulary and the high school sciences, as well as world language and basic skills. Programs that we are continuing from the current year are the one-to-one Chromebook Initiative and the offering of the PSAT testing at the high school. Now, because this budget is developed based off of a zero-budget budgeting system, we evaluate the needs of each department and each classroom before the budget is struck, and only those things that are needed for the following year are funded. So as a result, there will be some staffing changes and reductions in staff due to reductions in needs by some students. In terms of an overall increase, the overall increase in this area is only about two percent. The next area that we're looking at is the area of support service. This includes services that are given to the students directly, however, they don't occur necessarily in the classroom, things like nursing, the nurses' office in each of the schools, OT and PT, speech therapy, extraordinary aid in terms of one-to-one aids, the child study team and guidance services, the media library services, and then the development of curriculum and instruction and training for the teachers. Inclusive in terms of additional or changes in programs this year, we will be adding a part-time behavioralist to the preschool program that is offered for special ed students. We will be expanding the vocational program that is offered to students at the high school with special needs as they transition from the school environment into a work environment. We will be expanding the student programs that we've been offering. Last year, we offered a program on student anxiety. This year, we did one on vaping and social media applications, and we'd like to continue those programs into next year. And then finally, with the completion of the media centers at Valley View and Woodmont, we will be adding to their libraries in terms of additional books for those new media centers. The biggest area of change in these particular support service areas do relate to the vocational program for the high school as that program is expanding, and then the additional behaviorists for the preschool program as that program is expanding. The next area is the area of administration and benefits. For the administration, this includes the general administration, that of the Board of Education and the central office, the school administration at each of the individual buildings, as well as supporting services for the business office and the district-wide technology. But the programs included in these have basically been flat year-to-year. The largest change is in the area of legal costs. A separate area that's also included as part of this is the area of employee benefits, bad employee benefits. It includes the employee benefits for the entire district, not just the administration. So this includes the benefits for all the employees in the previous two areas. And changes in this area relate to increases in premiums for medical insurance. The final area is the area of buildings and operations. This includes items such as the maintenance and custodial cleaning services of all the buildings, security for the buildings, transportation services to get students to and from school, as well as to and from activities, the food service program, and then equipment and improvements to the building. Areas that are included in here are an expansion of security services. We currently have one resource officer and one class-three officer. We will be adding a second class-three officer. The other large change that you see in this area is the area of improvements to the buildings as our referendum projects are becoming complete. We will be doing Phase Three this summer, the summer of two thousand and twenty, and that will pretty much finish up the referendum. Other renovation projects are now going to begin, and those other renovation projects include exterior work at the high school, upgrades to the grounds at the high school, and branding, exterior branding, the repair of the parking lots, both the back lot as well as the front lot, and a partial roof replacement at Woodmont. Yeah, just as a clarification, in terms of the resource officer, that second class-three officer will be assigned to Lazar. The other, the resource officer is a district-wide resource officer who services all seven buildings, and the first class-three officer is already housed at the high school, so this will be in addition to put them at Lazar. So when we look at the budget as a whole, taking all of those areas and accumulating them, what we have is we have an increase to the budget of around two percent overall with the use of capital and maintenance reserves, monies that the board has put aside for the purpose of maintaining the buildings, that will be applied to those projects that I just mentioned. In order for us to have a balanced budget, we need to have revenue and resources available to us that equal the amount of the expenditures that we spend. And those come from a number of different sources, local sources such as tax levy, miscellaneous revenue from things like building usage, subscription busing, gate receipts, fund from state sources, such as monies from categorical aids like transportation and special ed aids, and for specific cost reimbursement. And then finally, the last place that we have resources available to us are from federal and from our own savings, money that we either receive from the federal government for study programs, or for money that we put in from our own resources or on fund balance or reserves in the case of the maintenance and the capital reserve, and those funds then are placed as resources to be used. Collectively, what you'll notice is that the total amount of revenue for the general fund and for the amount of money that we are taking out of the capital and maintenance reserves are equal to the amount of expenditures for the general fund and for capital or maintenance projects. There are two other areas that are part of the presentation of the annual school budget that includes special revenue, which relates to monies that come from grants from local, state, and federal sources for specific purposes. So in the case of the revenues, those local sources are from local providers who have given us money for very specific programs. In the case of state, that relates to the non-public students. In the case of state, that relates to the non-public students who are serviced through non-public institutions within Monville, and the federal relate to the titled programs in addition to the IDEA programs for students with disability. The second area that is also included in here is the debt service area for the purpose of paying off debt that has been accumulated through referendums that were passed in previous years. Those variances vary from year to year based on the issuance and the payments due on those issuances. From the total amount of 2.6 million that's being raised for debt service, about 300,000 is being appropriated through fund balance with about 300,000 through state debt. If you recall, when we had the referendum, we indicated that the state would be funding 40% of the total cost of the program. That debt service aid is that 40% coverage that we had originally mentioned. With the budget in total, the tax impact of this particular budget on an average house assessed at $229,000 is an increase of $224. And that is the budget for the 2021 school year.
They're all muted, so I don't know if they realize that.
Oh, okay, well, so we need to get Charlie unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, say it with a little bit more vigor. Thank you, Kattine. Between the presentation you made on the 10th and tonight, next year, we're going to give a test out to every board member to see how well they do and how much they remember. But thank you very much. Any questions of board members on?
Just one thing, Charlie. Kattine, the average assessed value is 529,000.
Yeah, 529, yeah.
What did I say?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, 229. I apologize. 224, the average, okay. How average the house assessed in Monville is valued at $529,000. The tax impact is $224.
And I'll just add, as Chair of Finance, I'd like to congratulate the administration, the business office, all of our district's administrators and teachers and staff who helped put together this budget. It's a budget that continues to add things, that fulfills our mission and our vision and our expectations for academic excellence, and I think you all should be very proud of yourself. I think it's a budget that's easily supported.
Thank you, Karen. You beat me to it. I was just going to introduce you, but thank you very much for those comments. Any other comments? All right, well, let's hop into one of the items on the agenda so for a motion when we get to it. So if there's no other questions on the budget, we can go back to the agenda and look at various reports. Our first report would be-
Charlie, it looks like we may have a question from one of the attendees.
On the budget?
Yeah, apparently, we think.
We'll accept the question on the budget, yes.
Okay, Mrs. Haskett, if you could state your question.
Hello. Actually, my question is not for the budget, it's for the graduation, so I'll-
All right, so we will, we will come back to you when we have finished the action items on the agenda, and we have a second public comment period, and we will get back to you and allow you to make your comments at that time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, we have committee reports. Finance and facility, Karen?
Uh, well, we just did it.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you, Karen, for chairing that meeting along with the administration and the rest of your colleagues on that committee.
Yep.
A lot of time was spent, and I appreciate it greatly. Curriculum and instruction, Mr. Palmer?
Oh, no report. We haven't met since we met before the last meeting.
Okay, policy and personnel, Dave? Is Dave with us?
You're muted, David.
Hello?
Hold on. Hold on.
I'm holding.
Okay, I'm here. Are you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you're there.
Okay.
Anything you want to report on the policy committee you had?
Yes, we did have a meeting. There are a number of policies we reviewed, and I believe we have a first reading for some of them. Is that correct, Casey?
Yes, all of them are up tonight for first reading.
Okay, there you go. That's it.
Communications, Mr. Rappaport? I mean, Mrs. Zuckerman?
No report tonight.
Okay, safety and security, Mr. O'Brien? Hello? Mr. O'Brien?
We have not, we have not met.
I see Mike on the screen.
All right, let's skip that one. Delegates, see if somebody can get him back. Delegates, do we have anything, Karen?
Uh, nothing really new to report. I mean, you guys already know that New Jersey School Boards has canceled all in-person meetings and has moved to a virtual format for their podcasts, and they've done some county meetings virtually and some Facebook Live events, and it looks like the Morris County School Boards meeting will also be virtual, and it's been moved to June 18th.
June 18th?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen.
That's the word I have.
Thank you. Morris County, Mike O'Brien? Can anyone hear him?
I don't think he's on, Charlie.
He's gone.
All right, no report for him. Educational Services, Mr. Rappaport?
Yes, we had a meeting on April 15th, so just a few updates from, from that committee. It's, one of the interesting things is that they're still going to try to pay all the third-party contracts that are, that are out there, but they also need to certify that they're still have the people on payroll. So if, if we're obligated to pay the contracts and they're not, they've not laid off anyone, then they will continue to get paid per the, the terms of the contract. The Central Park School obviously is closed, it's been fully sanitized, and they try to send home as, as much equipment from the school as possible to the kids' homes so that the, as much virtual learning can be done from, with the teachers, working with the kids, they have the equipment at home. It, it works for some of the kids, but obviously, there's, there's a lot of other kids where the distance learning just doesn't work, and unfortunately, very little can be done to, to help them in this particular circumstance. In the other news, the Park Lake School, that was the, the building that's no longer needed and was potentially going to be sold. As of now, the buyer has pulled out of the contract. They remain interested in the future if, if the distance learning goes away and they're able to open up the school, but they didn't want to be obligated in having the school and, and closing on the contract if they weren't sure if they're going to be able to open up the building. So as of right now, that's back up for, for sale. Then the next meeting is, is May 13th, and that's everything from Morris.
I just had a question for you. At the beginning, you mentioned about transportation, that if they could, the bus contractors, if they could indicate that they paid the people, they would get paid full by the ed services? Is that what you were saying, like?
Yes, right. They're, they're, the, the commission is following the, the policy that if the employees are still on roll and the business has not submitted for business interruption insurance, then we'll continue to honor the, the contracts and the payments.
Even though there was no oil or gas or anything spent for two and a half, three months, they're still going to pay them the full contract, right?
Well, it, there, there's two other things that are going on. The first is there are the bus drivers are still doing some work. They're not completely stopped, so there's weekly materials that do get dropped off at the students' homes, and so the bus drivers are acting as, as couriers to make sure that one has the, the materials that they need on, on a weekly basis.
Thank you.
And also that, a lot of the contracts where, where they may not be doing anything, we're going to at least honor the vendors' fixed costs. So we'll still pay them on their fixed costs that they're incurring, and the incremental costs, obviously, as you said, like gas and oil, we would not be paying them for that portion of the contract.
That's good, because we have a lot of contracts with them in Monville, and we have to reimburse educational services. So that's good that we won't have to reimburse them for the whole amount if they don't, you know, we'll pay them for what they pay, but we don't have to pay them for the gas and electric, gas and oil and stuff like that.
Yep.
So, great. Thank you, Michael. Mr. Palmer, drug awareness? Mr. Palmer, wake up.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. I'm, I'm here. I was on mute, no report.
No report, okay. Liaison, has O'Brien ever joined us back or he left?
Back, I'm back. There's no report.
You don't have anything on the boosters, right?
No.
Okay. Any liaisons, any of the schools? I don't think so. Okay. One second, let me turn the paper over. Is this an ample, ample time for public participation about, on agenda items? Have any questions? Section H on agenda items, not graduation. Okay, no, no questions?
We have one.
We have one, okay.
Mrs. Krauskopf?
Hi, yes, I saw that on the budget. It said that there was going to be an additional third grade teacher. Can you specify what school that is for, what elementary school?
Uh, that's Woodmont, right? Yes. Yeah, Woodmont School, and these are, these additions are all driven by class size and, and the district's class size policy.
Okay, so that additional third grade is for Woodmont, not Cedar Hill?
There was an addition for-
We did, we did add a position at Cedar Hill, yes, but it's not viewed as an additional position due to some other changes in personnel within the context of the building.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do want to know, Mr. Grau, that we did have a message from Mr. Modrak, that, Dr. Modrak, that he has a question on the budget as well?
Well?
Oh, okay.
Speak up.
Uh, just, yeah, I was just wondering, has there been any word on whether or not there'll be changes in our revenue from local, state, or federal sources, and if so, what that would, you know, do to the budget?
The indication that we have is that by the end of May, maybe as early as May 20th, we could expect some information from the state of New Jersey, and it is quite likely that there may be some modifications to our state aid allocations, and when we receive that information, we will certainly review it together with the administrative team to determine what, if any, modifications would need to be made to the budget. And we're not unique, that, that's a statewide phenomenon.
But right now, we have to submit a budget to the county with the figures that have been certified to us, correct?
That is correct.
We can't increase or decrease the state aid because we haven't received any certification. Once you get this, then we'll have to reevaluate the whole expenditure part or additional revenues wherever we might get it. This isn't just going to be Monville, this is going to be every Board of Education, I believe, and every municipality, and not just this state, but a lot of states. So that ought to be interesting between the governor's message on the 15th and the 20th of May for this, quote, I'm going to say revised state aid for lack of a better word. Dave, does that answer your question?
Yes, I wouldn't necessarily characterize, characterize as interesting, but we'll see.
Anybody else? All right, would somebody please move the consent agenda?
Move.
We have a motion in a second.
Can I make one correction to the agenda? This is for item L31, which is our appointments and transfers. The first item there, you will see that this is a long-term elementary substitute teacher, and the salary amount that's listed, I'm sure she's fantastic, but not worth $115.75 an hour, that amount should be listed as the per diem amount.
Thank you.
You can note that, you know, on the agenda, and then reflect that in the minutes, that would be fantastic.
What number was it, Renee?
That's L3, appointments and transfers, item number one.
Thank you. All right, let's go through item I, the minutes. Any corrections, changes? Item J? K? Where, which is the budget? L? M? And I think we ended with the policies. I haven't, I didn't get there yet. Yeah, item M, and then item N. Question? Question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Are there any questions? Okay. All righty. Mrs. Slunt, roll call, please.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
I'm muted.
Was that, yes, I think, okay. Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Hi.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. The next part of the agenda is a resolution. We're not going to be going into closed session, so there's no item O. We then have MNOP, which is- We're going to meet in a public session on May 12th at 7:30. I can't read mine, I apologize. On the 12th, this will be another virtual one under the present guidelines unless things change. Item Q, is there any old business at this time? Section R, any general board comments and new business?
Actually, just a question with regard to the virtual graduation, assuming we have one. Have arrangements been made to memorialize it with a recording?
I'm sorry, Mike, it kind of broke up at the end. Has arrangements been made for what?
To be able to memorialize it with a recording.
Oh, it's, it's going to be a, a, a recorded production. That, that, that is the virtual graduation that we would then show at the time of graduation on June 23rd, if, if that is what we are faced with doing. Yes.
That's a result of the meetings you're going to be having.
Well, we're moving ahead to prepare a virtual graduation. Well, we're moving ahead to prepare a virtual graduation.
I know, I know, but right now, that's what it looks like. And we'll be anxiously waiting for our next meeting and for, to see what happens and between the governor and these meetings. Anything else?
Yeah, that wasn't actually the question. The question was, if we have the virtual, is it going to be memorialized for a recording that would be played, saved and played back? That was the question.
It will be a recording, Mike, and it will be preserved so that it can be viewed over and over and over again.
Okay. And people can buy copies probably too. Anything else?
I don't think they'd have to buy it. They can just download it.
Anything else on new business by board members?
I have a question, Charlie.
Yes?
I was just wondering, Katine, any good news of any savings that the district has saved since the closing? Just curious.
I think that'll be something that we'll have to discuss in the finance committee in the one of the future, because it's still so soon and we don't have that many retirements that have come forward. But I think to give out numbers now would be a little premature. Hopefully, we get some with breakage. But that would be something when we have a finance committee, I believe. I know we do pick up money with breakage, right, Katine?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? All right, this is Section 5, Public Participation. Anything that was not on the agenda, and we'll also open questions on end-of-year events.
We're going to go back and recognize Mrs. Haskov, who had some comments to make with regard to graduation.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. First of all, we'd like to thank you all for the, all the work that the faculty members and everybody part of it is doing for the distance learning experience for children. I think it's working really well, and I thank you for that. I understand there is a virtual graduation plan. And I think it's a great idea for have Plan B. However, the way that Mr. Sanford and the way that the students and parents, some of them are looking at it, the virtual graduation is Plan A, and it's really not acceptable because we should have Plan B as in-person graduation. That's what our kids want. And that's what they deserve, and that's what they should have. Now, as far as virtual graduation for Plan B, I think it's great. Matter of fact, I think it's like a bonus, something special, extra special for the class of 2020. So why do I mean by that? Well, first of all, why do we have to stay with the date of June 23rd? Why not move to August? Why is that? Well, that gives us time to go on with a Plan A, in-person graduation. That's why we should focus on Plan A and not Plan B. Now, if we got a date for August, let's say the first week of August, because some of the kids go to school, college, fall away, let's consider it the first week of August to have a graduation in person. Pick a date. Then, the day after that, then we have graduation plan for Plan B, for virtual graduation. I think that's so important. And I have to explain to you that I have here these seniors' conversations. They're very disappointed. I mean, this really, it's disappointing, makes them sad for the fact that, and how we see it, and let me tell you, might not be the way that it's coming up. That's not the way that you want to do it. But the way that's coming across is like, okay, graduates June 23rd, we're done. Now, it happens to, I'm not saying that you doing that, but I'm saying that's how the kids see it. And how...
Mr. Haskin? Ms. Haskin?
Yes.
We have a policy on our long individuals. And I would suggest you go to one of these meetings on Thursday or Friday, call in or attend it, however they're going to do it.
Oh, yes, I am.
That's what we were talking about at the beginning of the meeting. All of these various things, I don't know if you missed the beginning when Dr. Roetar...
I was having trouble with my computer.
If she's read out all of the ideas that people have submitted. So the next thing would be for you to be available on Thursday evening or Friday afternoon and meet and talk and review these things with the high school administration. Because I think that's important for them to hear this.
Yes, and I apologize, but I had trouble with my computer, so I missed the beginning, so that's why.
Yeah, Dr. Roetar went through, she went through what's been done. And that's why I think a lot of people will be very interested in going to these meetings on Thursday and/or Friday to hear what's happening. And then naturally, to wait to see what's happening with the governor also. So please do that. I think some of your questions will be answered or could be answered at that time, okay?
Yes.
I just want to clear up, so that you do, as you go to the virtual meeting with Mr. Sanford on Thursday or Friday, that you understand that we have not given up on the idea of an in-person graduation. And in fact, Mr. Sanford, I would encourage you to view the videos that he has posted in Schoology. And you will understand that we are looking to possibly have an in-person graduation up through August 10th. All of that depends on what executive orders are in place with regard to social distancing. But we need to have a backup plan in case that is not possible. And that is why we are intending to prepare this virtual graduation ceremony.
Thank you, Dr. Roetar.
One second. I see the video. And in the video, he did say he will consider, but he sticked to the date of June 23rd for this virtual graduation. It's not acceptable, should not be acceptable.
All right, you bring this up on Thursday and Friday when you talk with him, okay?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
That's the environment for that.
Thank you.
Charlie, if I can add to that, though, I looked at the Mr. Sanford video. And if I understood it correctly, I thought what he said was that although we will have a virtual graduation on the 23rd, that did not rule out that we could have additional ceremonies beyond that. We might have the virtual and an in-person ceremony. Is that correct?
Michael, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the video, so I don't know.
That is correct. It's correct. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, right now, I would like to recognize CJ Arena.
Hey CJ, how are you?
Mr. Grau?
How are you?
I'm good, Mr. Grau. How are you?
Good, good to hear from you.
I just wanted to say that I missed coming to the board meetings, and I don't think I ever got my invitation.
You probably love it not seeing me there.
I watch you every day, CJ. You're doing a great job with the morning announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Roetar. I just, I just wanted to say that on behalf of the students, we really want to thank the board for being transparent with us and accepting our ideas and taking them all into consideration. I think it goes a long way, and I think the students are understanding of the situation that we're in right now. And we just had held a student-only conference this past Friday on Schoology. And I think a lot was said, and we're all on the same page right now. I also want to thank the administration, especially Mr. Sanford. They have been very transparent, and I think this, these next two meetings with them in Schoology is going to help us a lot to move forward and really gain clarity in what will be happening in the senior events.
CJ, thank you so much, and thank you for everything you've done for the senior class this year. You are, you are one of the nicest young men that I have been associated with. And I offer you nothing but the best, and I hope the time will come for graduation when I can give you your diploma, whenever it is, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Grau. I appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, if I could recognize Mrs. Kane.
Hi.
Mrs. Kane, are you there?
Okay. I am there. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
A little louder.
Okay, great. Wanted to know if there's any type of living document. I've seen some great recommendations, some more feasible than others. So wanted to see, because there's so many rumors, things going on out there. Maybe if there was a way where the senior parents could see some of the ideas that the school and Board of Ed are looking at. And see, I'm sure there's some that are just more feasible than others. I think that would be really good for everybody to have. I mean, I will be there on Thursday. I want to hear what Mr. Sanford talks about. But I think having more information out there would definitely help us with some clarity.
Well, I know that Dr. Roetar read something at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, now, what's interesting, it was brought to my attention today that Randolph is actually looking to do a drive-in virtual graduation. And I know Randolph is more our size, they're in Morris County. I wasn't able to get additional information. Somebody said they were going to send that to me. So it would be great if it was forwarded on to you.
I have not read anything about Randolph or any other districts, because I think most of them are waiting till the governor's message comes out, but I don't know.
My concern is if we wait for the governor's message, we're going to be too late to react.
Well, that's why the administration, that's why the administration is moving ahead with these alternate plans to be ready.
Right. And I agree with that, but like the previous speaker, if it's going to be a virtual graduation, I agree with who previously spoke. Why does it have to be June 23rd? Why can't we kind of push it out?
Well, that's why you should...
It's not going to make a difference.
That's why I think you'll get the information on Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, I hope so.
Okay, I hope so too.
Yeah. Okay.
Ms. Garcia? It is, you are recognized, and go ahead and speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I'm also a senior mom. So of course, this is very upsetting, the whole situation with graduation and prom. I'm just feeling the same way. I'm just wondering, like, myself, I would feel better. We could put plans in place for a date to reschedule an actual in-person graduation and prom. I'm seeing all these towns around me, you know, rescheduling prom for July dates and also graduation. And I think if we did that, I would kind of feel like that is the plan if it was put into place. And I agree with what the other mom just said, that if we wait too long, like, all the dates to have these things might be, like, taken up if we were going to do prom in July. So, yeah, that's, that's just what I wanted to add, if we could...
Okay. I think you're bringing up some valuable questions, and please make them known on Thursday or Friday. I really mean it. Because the administration is the ones taking the leadership in this. Okay?
And I'm sure, you know, they would feel this way, especially like if they had their child, you know, that was graduating. I think we just...
Very possible. Anyone else?
I do not see anybody else with their hand up.
All right, I would entertain. The next meeting is March 12th. And those, those parents who were there and students, Thursday and Friday, please, decide to go to the meeting and ask questions that you may have. Keep in mind that you may have an idea that you think is a world beater, but maybe no one else agrees with you. But don't get disappointed, because we want to do the best we can for this class. It is a special class. Since there's nobody else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you all very much, and I wanted to thank the parents for hooking up with us tonight, and thank Dr. Roetar and Mrs. Slunt for their presentations. And if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn this meeting and see you all on May 12th. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Bye.
Thanks, guys.
Bye-bye.